Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jerry Pavlik Supervisor, Mark Schreiber Welding Instructor, and Scott Kapliski, Doug McGrew, Joe Zacharias, Rob Zalantik, and Don Prowinski from Lorain County Joint Vocational School Welding Students are here today regarding the county's bell stand.
Yes, and we have awards for you if you'll please come up. Man, don't they look sharp, all dressed up. They don't look like the picture in the paper. You guys had your work clothes on then.
These are the young people that designed the Community College Holder Bicentennial Bell. They're in a welding class at JBS and of course their teacher is very proud of you. And it's something that you can look back on, point it out to your grandchildren, and they can do it down to their grandchildren and say, "You had something to do with that." I want to give you some awards. This one is for Jerry, and it's recognizing him for his contribution in allowing welding students to participate in building the stand to hold the Lorain County Bicentennial Bell.
I'd just like to say that actually this is Mark Schreiber, our welding instructor, and the students, I got very little to do with. Pictures on record, but actually, I feel that are very responding to everybody. Thank you very much.
We do have a picture, but we don't have Jerry's stand. It's just too big.
Do you want the spare jokes?
Pictures here. If anybody would mark us, I'll just turn them over. Bell will be molded at the county fair. Okay, Mark, recognizing him for his excellent teaching abilities in welding and instructing the students how to build a stand to hold the Lorain County Bicentennial Bell. Thank you, Mark. Want you now, we're very proud of you. Recognizing him for his superior craftsmanship in welding demonstrated in helping to build the stand to hold the Lorain County Bicentennial Bell. And each and every one of these will say the same thing. Imagine put hours of working for this. This one is for Doug. And this one is for me.
Good job.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, the county administrator said that his administrative assistant who is handling the bicentennial for us, Sandy Strohstadt, made the contact with JBS and made the arrangements for that. So I would also like to publicly thank Sandy for her help in facilitating that. Thank you, Sandy. More to come, right? Good. Thank you, Madam Chair. At 10:15, Lorain County Historical Society will update the board. Under Resolutions, one, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye, with the exception of number 560 to 562 and 577.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Board of Commissioners.
I believe that we have an executive session, if you understand me.
Jeff, do we need an executive session? In regards to hiring, firing, what's in regards to?
Hiring, firing.
What is in it, sorry? Union contract issues? Thank you.
Under the Commissioners, number 10, approve the Commissioners' Board Meeting Minutes and weigh the reading in the same for February 27th, March 6th, 13th, 18th, and 20th of 2003.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Adopt a policy to exempt all purchases under $750 for calendar year 2003 and streamline the payment procedure effective retroactive to January 1st, 2003. Resolution 02446 has expired for the year 2002.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Authorize release and payments of retainage to various contractors for county projects. $4,413.48 to Chin Reesaw Incorporated, Alariah, Ohio, for work performed on the administration building restroom facilities repair project, and $4,788 to RJ Joseph Construction, Avon, for work performed on the Grafton Township Beldon School Elevator Project. This work is completed and all this paperwork has been received.
So moved. Support.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Authorize Lorain County Budget Department via the Lorain County Auditor to create a new fund, Fund 246, titled Juvenile School Liaison Mediation Grant. Domestic Relations will be receiving this grant in the amount of $35,000 for juvenile justice and delinquency prevention, and no local match was required.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Appoint various members to the NOACA Governing Board. One, Commissioner Betty Blair and Commissioner David J. Moore. Two, Robert Burner, Mayor Avon Lake, as the Municipal Representative, which was recommended by Lorain County Community Alliance. Three, Ken Roth, Columbia Township Trustee, as the Township Representative, which was recommended by Lorain County Clerk and Township Trustees Association. And appoint various members to the NOACA Transportation Advisory Committee, which is Frank D'Attilio, Lorain County Chamber of Commerce, and alternate Brian Bonham, OSU Extension Agent, Economic Development, and Rebecca Gray, Lorain County Community Alliance serves as an alternate as a private sector member.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have some questions. The mayor here, the mayor used to be recommended by the Mayor's Association.
And he was Madam Chair to the Alliance last Friday, and they conferred with the recommendation of the Mayor's Association.
Okay, and then, can you explain to me Joe D'Attilio, Lorain County Chamber of Commerce, and alternate Brian Bonham? Now, is he the alternate for the chamber, or?
He's the alternate for Frank D'Attilio, and Rebecca Gray is the alternate for Brian if Frank cannot attend. A year or so ago, the NOACA updated their Code of Regulations and they assigned seats to private sector on the Transportation Advisory Committee. And so this would be the second year, well, really, yeah, we're into the second year, of them being named to serve on this committee. Most of these are repeat appointments with the exception of Mayor Burner. Mayor Hill had been serving in that capacity and she asked to be replaced.
So there's actually two alternates for Frank D'Attilio?
Well, yes, in fact, if one alternate can't go, then the other one can. It's so that the seat will not remain vacant at any meeting.
No one could been, actually, from the private sector, you couldn't find anyone from the private sector?
These are? I believe that.
The chamber I wouldn't consider a private sector.
Well, perhaps that's not the right wording then, since I put the memo together. It's supposed to be representing the economic development interests of the respective county. I did title it Private Sector Members, but the intent was that each county has a seat and it's to address issues of how transportation affects economic development in the respective communities. And since we do have a sizable contract arrangement with the chamber, I guess that it was thought at the time that that would be a good seat for them to fill. David Goss, who is the representative for the, I forget what the name of the association is in Cleveland, it has different names, but he is a member of this committee as well. And I think that there's been a great effort by the economic development specialists in the five county area to try to work together. I know that D'Attilio has worked with David Goss and other economic development initiatives to make each other aware of what's going on and to try to enhance our entire northeast Ohio region.
Just, it doesn't appear to me that, you know, that they represent the private sector. And I just wondered if no one could be found, or?
Well, and again, I apologize for that because I put the memo together and I termed it Private Sector Members, so I don't have my file with me that in fact reverts back to it. But the history was, behind that was that in the past, these people did not have a seat on the Transportation Advisory Committee. And specifically, the Cleveland-Cuyahoga delegation wanted a seat on NOACA's Governing Board, and they did not, we did not accept that request. But as an alternate suggestion, we gave them each seats on the Transportation Advisory Committee. There's X number of people on that committee, and so there was a little bit of rearranging about how those seats would be divided. And one went to each county to be represented by an economic development initiative.
I understand that, but when I was on the board, I know that we designed the membership, more or less, and I remember George Corey was here at the time, and I thought that was for private sector. And I'm still saying, in my opinion, these people are not private sector, and we have no representation on NOACA from private sector.
Oh, and I don't think you will either. The Governing Board itself is made up of elected officials, with the exception of ODOT, the Ohio Department of Transportation now has a seat, and making the total membership 38. And that seat was given to them, I believe, when this Code of Regulations was updated. And they're the only non-elected position on the Governing Board.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm on the board. I own a business. My alternate's here today, Joe Montalone, he owns his own private business here in Alariah. So at least I know there's a couple of people on the board that are private sector business owners, so I'd like to thank you publicly for your work at NOACA, for what you've done as my alternate, so there's my plug. I saw the window and I took it. Anything else?
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
I'll say aye if it's the desire of my colleagues.
Authorize the donation of various office equipment to Penfield Township that is no longer being used by the county, which includes 29 plastic chairs, four four drawer filing cabinets, two swivel chairs, and one desk.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd just like to commend Penfield Township on their new building, and it sounds very exciting. There was an article in the paper showcasing some pictures, and they're going to have an open house, and I think they've done a wonderful job. Kudos to them.
Number 16, authorize Lorain County to adopt a brand privacy policy so as to fully comply with HIPAA privacy laws and regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Would Mr. Cordez like to comment on this briefly, Madam Chair?
Juan, do you want to talk on this issue? No, I?
Your number 16, Jim.
I was looking at number 17. Apologies.
I knew that right away.
Sorry.
Wake up.
I was reading them.
Always tries to stay one step ahead of us. It didn't work today.
I didn't know there was going to be any questions on the HIPAA. Mr. Flanagan's done an excellent job. I reviewed the material earlier. The draft that you received will be receiving some minor changes for the convenience of customer service that we provide out of the Human Resources Department. It complies with all the needs and requirements of the HIPAA law, which becomes effective later this month. Commissioner Facy, I believe you attended a seminar on that earlier in the year, so you understand the stringent requirements that are being placed upon us with regard to proper safeguarding and disclosure of health care, specifically diagnosis and treatment information on anybody that's enrolled in the county health care plan. It's quite a voluminous document, and again, the prosecutor's office has done an excellent job, and I would encourage you, if you have the time, to peruse it, but if you don't, the people that you tasked to be informed about it have already, and I would urge you to approve it. Thank you.
What it actually is, is a Privacy Act. And when I attended the meeting down there, they more or less said even the employees, if they're in the hallway talking about someone's medical bills or any medical illnesses that someone has, this is against the people's privacy. So it really tightens up on Privacy Act. It's something, that's my understanding of, it boiled down in a nutshell.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Facy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approve and enter into various contracts between Lorain County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Children and Families Council for the FYO3 Wellness Block Grant Initiative for production and publication of media announcements in the total amount not to exceed $53,600, and authorize payment of said contracts as follows, effective April 14, 2003 through June 30, 2003. One is W OBL in the amount of $7,272.50, WEOL $18,705, WDLW $7,272.50, and the WAVE in the amount of $20,350.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we want to hear from Juan? I would like to.
Juan, I would too, because I think that's an awfully lot of money spent in advertisement, and I'd like to know why we're spending so much in advertisement.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Juan.
Juan Linares, Director of the Lorain County Children and Families Council. In response to your question, Commissioner Facy, the approach toward the expenditures of the Wellness Block Grant, which is a mass media, public education usage of the dollars, opposed to, or compared with, the direct service components of the dollars. So we could have gone one or two ways in terms of how the dollars would have been expended. You'll remember last year, ma'am, that we also took the same approach in terms of the public awareness and education outreach approach. We had the radio spots, the billboards, and the educational materials that were purchased last year. For this year, our intent is to indeed replicate the radio spots. In addition, we have purchased the Baby Think It Overdials, and we're also purchasing abstinence material for distribution to Lorain County. In terms of the specific amount of the $53,000 for the radio spots, this is slightly higher than what we spent last year. I don't recall the exact number, ma'am, but I want to say it was right in the range of $41,000 last year. These proposals were submitted, and I had discussed this not only with the committee of the council that reviews the charge and tries to give the framework in terms of how the dollars will be spent. So this was the recommendation of this particular committee in terms of the expenditures.
Juan, I think my question is, have they reviewed this enough? I mean, are there clients out there that are so aware of this program that the advertisement is not needed, or are you still feeling like there's not enough clients out there that understand that this program is available for them? Why are we spending so much? I don't, I really don't understand that part of it.
Well, I think, I think that the whole issue of public education and awareness regarding sexual activity and pregnancy rates among the young people in Lorain County has to be a message that is continually brought to them. I guess the short answer is, I think that we should continue to deliver the message while we have the dollars available to do that. Unfortunately, given the cuts in the state budget, this is the last year that the Wellness Block Grants will be available to Lorain County. The other part of it was, and the intent of purchasing the dolls and the abstinence material, was that that material can be with the county and we can distribute this material for months to come beyond June 30. So yeah, I think, I think that education and awareness and outreach are extremely important if we're committed to reducing the pregnancy rates among young people in Lorain County, and the dangers that go along with sexual activity.
How do we know if these billboards and all this advertisement is working?
You know, quite frankly, Commissioner, the prevention is something that it's very difficult to measure. Historically, that's been the ongoing conflict with putting dollars in prevention programs. The best way that I could answer that this morning is to say that we could look at our pregnancy rates for the next two or three years and then compare them with what the rates were prior to the campaign, and see if indeed there has been a reduction in the pregnancy rate. Even if we find that there is a reduction in the pregnancy rate, there's still, it's still very difficult to be able to specifically say that that reduction was caused because of the education that we provided to them. So can we prove it? No, we can't prove it. Will there be indicators in years to come to say that prevention works? My hope is that the rates will be lower.
And there's no better way to spend this money in education that reaches individuals rather than a mass of people?
Um.
The individuals that actually need the service.
Yes, yes, I understand the question. Again, the dollars, the approach that we took in Lorain County was to do the massive media campaign. The other approach was to do the one-on-one mentoring, the direct service to individuals in the schools that have, or in other organizations that have been identified as at risk for sexual activity, at risk for becoming pregnant at a young age. That was the other approach where, that these dollars could have been used for. The problems with doing it that way is the massive amount of paperwork that is involved in trying to establish eligibility for each and every individual child if we went with the direct service approach toward the individual. There are income guidelines that are required when you do it that way. There's a PRC application that is quite extensive, which requires the things like birth dates, social security numbers of every child in the home. The schools are reluctant, they're adamantly against doing that kind of, what they consider profiling, in order to receive the Wellness Block Grant services to just specific students in their schools. This way, the intent is that all of the students would be available to get something, and that we would not be identifying those students on an individual basis.
Juan, it's my opinion, for $53,000, we can hire someone to go into the high schools and reach these children individually. Has that been reviewed?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, we indeed attempted to put together a mentoring plan, because the literature will tell you that that is the most effective use of impacting behavior, changing behavior. That particular plan wasn't found to be acceptable at that time, because once again, we're looking at, the dollars are targeted for low-income individuals, and in order for that individual to receive the service, we must establish eligibility. When you take that, that approach within the confines or within the environment of a particular school, you're going to have children that are eligible and children that are not eligible. That in and of itself creates some very difficult problems for the schools. Although the intent is solid, the dollars requiring the massive amount of documentation to use in that fashion, it was not an expedient or an efficient use of these funds in that mode. Therefore, it was recommended by the committee and the council to go forward with, once again, the mass media, the outreach, the education, the awareness.
So what would happen if you didn't spend the money? You'd go back? Because these are just earmarked for advertising dollars, correct? Is that what you're trying?
If we don't spend the dollars, they essentially would go back, Commissioner.
And so your target marketing, who are your target markets?
The primary population under Wellness Block Grant are the ages between 12 and 19.
And you think kids between the ages of 12 and 19 listen to 107.3 The Wave, easy-listening jazz?
I think the secondary population is also the parents of the young people, and also their older siblings.
And you said low-income individuals. I have a hard time trying to get my 13-year-old daughter to listen to any other music other than hip-hop right now, which is killing me. But I just have, I mean, my issue is that, I think I understand where your target market is. What I have an issue with is how much money is going just to one radio station that I do not think will be effective in the reach that you're trying to reach, or the market you're trying to reach. That's just my own personal opinion. I think the WAVE covers more than Lorain County. It covers probably about six or seven counties. And I wasn't about to pick on a bunch of young men that were in the audience here right now that are trying to sneak out, but.
Thanks, guys.
See that? We can't even keep them in to talk about sex, and they're leaving. You're telling me the radio's going to work? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have gone there, but I had to. No, my only, seriously, my only concern is that the WAVE covers over five or six counties. It does cover, and it's a great radio station. I don't want to take anything away from the WAVE. I just don't see how this program should be matched up with the WAVE. I mean, there is one other radio station that isn't on here that does target another minority group in this county, and I don't see them on here either.
Right, sir, we didn't submit, we didn't receive a bid package.
Did you try to call them and say, I mean, just, I mean, when you guys do the bids, do you advertise it? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't know, I just, if we're trying to reach out and all we're doing is running an ad, I mean, we could have another hour discussion on that. I'm just saying that, you know, you got $20,000 going to a five, six-county area, that's another economic area. I didn't know if the, who made that decision to divide these up? Was it the council that made that decision?
Well, in terms of the overall components of the? Well, in terms of the overall components of the...
Yeah, how much money went where, you know?
To each category within the program, you mean, or with each radio station?
Yeah, fifty-three, six, you got, you got twenty thousand going to The Wave.
It was, these are proposals that they've submitted. These radio stations submitted proposals into, in these amounts to us.
Okay.
They have not, uh, been approved yet.
Why don't you simply take the ones you're satisfied with and table, table the others and we can come back and take a look at that.
Michael, sir, I don't want to have these dollars go back to the state if we can use them here, though, okay? That's the other issue. I mean, are you on a timeline here, or...
Well, we could, uh, we could reallocate those dollars into another category, like additional materials to be purchased, for example.
Like such a, right, which is like the dollars you're talking about?
Uh, well, I think we have enough dollars, but certainly in terms of the abstinence materials, curricula, that would be distributed to schools. I mean, we could take, for example, the, the twenty thousand dollars earmarked for The Wave and put it in that category.
That would be, I think, I think...
If that's, you know, if that's okay with the board.
You're covering three stations here, and, um...
It's, it's not quite that simple, but we do have three months to deal with it because the fiscal year for these funds ends on, uh, the end of June. So, but we would have to resubmit for a new budget through ODJS.
Correct.
Let's not, it's not quite as simple as let's just move it over here. If you would approve the things that you're satisfied with, then we can redirect the energies on the things you're not satisfied with and bring something back. Right? Because it would have, you would have to submit a revised budget. We've gotten into trouble with this before, and I don't want to go down that road, so...
Well, it wouldn't be better to sit table this for one week and...
It's, it's gonna take more than a week to, to see where we can redirect some of the dollars. If you don't want to do advertising at all, then we'll, we'll get right on top of it. If you want to do some, that's fine, too.
All right, we have a motion on, on the floor. And a second.
I was gonna make an exception on the number four. Let me tell you what, what's the second? Am I the second?
Yes.
Am I the second?
I, I would prefer that we submit a revised budget and, and direct these dollars to merchandise that will reach the individual children.
Tell you what, I'll, I'll withdraw my second. We'll start over.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, now we're at square one. Would you, so what I'm hearing is that we can make a motion for number one, two, and three, and then maybe have you come back and discuss how to reallocate some of those dollars? Is that what I've heard, I'm hearing from two people?
We'll, we'll need to, we'll need to sit down, and then we'll need to resubmit a budget change to ODJS.
Correct.
Uh, and then see if they, that, that, that'll work on what you're proposing, then bring it back to this board. It'll take a couple of weeks.
Can we approve the first three?
Certainly.
Without messing up your application?
Can, can you hold this and see if he can't reallocate the entire thing to something that reaches the individual children that need this and not the entire public?
See, the, the problem, Commissioner, when you're dealing with, with the, these are not GRF dollars. In the past, we've had GRF dollars that, that were not as specifically, well, were not as restricted as these dollars are. If you do direct services with these dollars, you have to get a PRC application, they have to be qualified to receive benefits. One of the problems that we've struggled with under the Wellness Block Grant this year, and we struggled with it last year, was being able to do outreach that is general in nature where we don't require a PRC application, and those things that the board has been a little bit upset about, and maybe rightfully so, billboards, uh, had, uh, radio spots and posters and things like that, those are always, those are some of the mechanisms that we're forced to use unless we want to go through a very arduous process of qualifying each direct individual's services.
Excuse me, Jim. Juan, would you please answer the question? I thought I heard you say that these can be redirected to merchandise. Can the, these dollars be redirected or can they not?
They could be redirected if we receive the approval from ODJS to revise the budget. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's my opinion that that's what we should wait for, to see if that, that, if we can get the approval.
Well, I'd like to know what kind of merchandise we're talking about, as long as we're having this general discussion.
Uh, there, it's primarily abstinence materials, brochures, curricula, video posters that are distributed to schools, youth groups, churches, who, and the materials are promoting abstinence.
Okay, and we already have some of those?
Yes, ma'am, we purchased, uh, I, I didn't bring the entire budget with me this morning. I want to say approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars in those materials.
That's great, and if we can continue to do that and if this funding dries out, you'll have it in stock.
Well, that's why I like the little, buying the little baby dials. I mean, even if you have a surplus of it, it's, because like you said, these dollars dry up, which I think they're going to, at least we can continue with some, I think, very good programs that, that you've done, so...
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I also feel like if you reach the child, you've reached the parent.
Correct. We purchased two hundred and seventy of the dials. They came in last week.
How, how do you distribute those dials?
Uh, we held a technical assistance session this Monday, or Tuesday, rather. We, what we do is that they're being stored at records retention. We have a tracking sheet in terms of the agency that comes in and requests X amount of dials. We keep an inventory log of which dials go out to which agencies for what amount of time. We also give them the curricula that they must follow, and the curricula includes a pre- and post-test, um, and also a parental consent form that is signed and a release form that is also signed in case there's any damages to the, to the equipment that the parents ultimately will be responsible for.
And can those dials only be used by a qualified, I mean, do they have to go through the process of establishing the fact that they're targeted, or can these dials be used by any of the youth in Lorraine County?
The dials can be used by any of the youth in Lorraine County.
All right, I think you ought to buy more dials. I think that's a perfect example, Annie. Take that doll with you and keep it for a while. It's a realism.
Oh, sure beats a bag of flowers.
Yes.
I would move to postpone for further information. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, Juan. Thanks.
Have a motion.
Okay, um, I got another question, though, before. When you did these bids, since this is, is this considered public service?
Uh, yes, because it's paid from government, uh...
All right. Couldn't we get, I mean, on these bids, is there some free spots?
Yes, there is.
Okay, because that's what the top part of the bill says?
Yes, we, we get...
Okay, I just want to make sure, that's the question I had, because we're getting a lot of, I was trying to understand the, because usually if you're doing...
We get PSAs.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I like to make a motion, um...
We've got a motion on the floor.
I heard it's died for a second.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve one, two, and three of number seventeen. And I think Juan knows what he has to do for number four to come back, so that's, that's a motion I'd like to make. See if that one flies.
Seeing there's no second?
It's like that one died.
I select the second.
Want to try one?
No, I just think that I, I, no, I think that through our discussion, we've indicated to Juan that we might like this presented to us in a little more enhanced fashion. You, you, I think you got a gist of what's going on here. You want to go back and see what you can do?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
You think you know what you gotta do?
That's what my motion was, to postpone this for further information.
So, we're just gonna hold this?
So just hold till next week, good. Okay. Thank you.
I, I can, I have a draft of the commercials if you'd like me to read.
No, I'd prefer that...
Wouldn't you share it with us, Juan?
No, I'd...
Not now, but share it with us, okay? Thank you, Annie.
Always a pleasure, right? Always a pleasure.
Number eighteen, under Children's Services, authorize additions and deletions of various personnel with Lorraine County Children's Services to utilize the Shell Oil Gasoline credit card not to exceed two hundred dollars and the agency's MasterCard not to exceed twenty-five hundred for the year two thousand and three.
Some moves, that kind of discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, OR contract, father and son, Sheffield Township, Ohio, in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars for the emergency home repair assistance for a sewer connection to Reitha Eberhart, forty-six, three-six-five Telegraph Road, Amherst Township. Five quotes were requested and only two bids were received, this being the most responsive to be paid from FY zero-two CDBG account, one-two-six-zero-two-two-five-zero-one-four-five-zero-four-three-o.
Some moves, that kind of discussion.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, instruct clerk to advertise for proposals on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services announcing the availability of funds, and they are seeking proposals for agencies to provide services for the job training, placement, and retention program to target hard-to-place individuals receiving W, OWF cash assistance, which will provide on the job training in both soft skills and job skills, job placement, case management, and retention services. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on April twenty-first and twenty-eighth, two thousand and three, and proposals will be open at two o'clock Monday, May fifth, in the Commissioner's Public Hearing Room.
Some move. Second discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Workforce Development Agency, authorize appointment of Ben Fligner, private sector member, to the Workforce Investment Board.
Also move. Second discussion.
I almost have the first draft. I don't have that on my agenda. What number are you on now, twenty-one?
Number twenty-one. That was added.
There it is, okay. No, I have, I, I'm just, no, no, I was, I was reading my agenda, that's what I...
No, he's helping you do this.
No, I had the wrong, oh, well, that's, no question, sorry.
It's better if you have the wrong agenda than no agenda at all.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I've done that before.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number twenty-two, we're not accepting and approving, we're going to approve and enter into a subdividers agreement for Hillside Subdivision number eleven, Amherst Township, for Edward J. and Wanda Lee Gargis, developer original lot number fifty-seven, consisting of sublofts two-thirty, two, two-thirty-three inclusive.
So cross out accept and, accept improvements?
Yes, this'll be for like in two weeks. I jumped ahead. We have to approve subdivision first.
Okay, so we need to enter into one?
Yes.
Okay, that's a move.
I believe this was recommended by the county engineer. I'll second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to publish a construction services public announcement to contract for services in connection with resurfacing of various county roads. Engineering firms interested in being considered for a contract to provide the required services should reply with a statement of qualifications no later than two o'clock on May fourteenth, two thousand and three. Statements received after this deadline will not be considered. As required by O R C one-five-three-point-six-five-seven-one, responding firms will be evaluated and ranked in order of their qualifications. Following this evaluation, Lorraine County Engineers' Office will enter into contract negotiations with the most highly qualified firm.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Instruct clerk to advertise for bids to contract for installation of paved berms on a section of Baumhart Road and Butternut Ridge Road in Carlisle Township at an estimated cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars to be paid from M V G T funds. Said notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on April fourteenth and twenty-first, and bids will be open at two o'clock on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and three, in the Commissioner's Public Hearing Room.
Well, some move.
Second discussion.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Portes, County Administrator?
No comments reported this morning, thank you.
Mr. Anissa, Assistant County Administrator?
I had no report this morning.
Commissioner's report.
I have none.
I have nothing here. I was very fortunate that Tony Abram from Avon Lake Chamber of Commerce approached us quite some time ago with some information in regards to prescription drugs, and the program is for free prescription drugs. There is some cost, and Tony's here this morning. Tony, can you come up to the podium? I think you can explain this probably a little bit better than I can, but in the meantime, I'd like to read this information. The program is for any age, and it's, um, there are over two thousand prescription drugs that are available. This program is provided by American Pharmaceutical Companies for people who meet criteria. A person must be a legal U.S. resident. A single person cannot have an annual income greater than sixteen thousand dollars. A family cannot have an annual income greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. Income amounts vary by each company, pharmaceutical company. A person cannot be covered by either a private or government prescription insurance copay. Medicare recipients qualify based on above income restrictions. A person recently laid off is also eligible. And Tony, I think you can explain the funding, how this works, twenty-five dollars enrollment and seven dollars per, um, per month?
Sure. We were interested in providing benefits for businesses, of course, as a Chamber of Commerce, and one of the benefits is, we came across that a lot of employees who are laid off lose their benefits, and we came across this program whereby if a person is laid off, they can still obtain prescription drugs even though they are laid off and don't have much of an income. And this company is called Everyone's RX, they're from Austin, Texas, and they provide this service for over a hundred pharmaceutical companies, and they provide, as Ms. Basie said, over two thousand prescription drugs. And the company charges a one-time fee of twenty-five dollars to enroll into the program, and the application consists of your name, address, phone number, the doctor, if you have one, more than one doctor, you get put down what their prescription is, the name of the prescription, the strength, and the frequency of taking the medication. And then that information is forwarded to our office and we then send it to Austin, Texas, and they can determine which medication is available through the pharmaceutical companies, and after that is taken care of, they, for all, there's a service charge of seven dollars per month, per medication, if you pay quarterly, and nine dollars per medication per month if you pay monthly direct. And for this service charge, what they do is work with the doctor's office and the patient, and if there's any change in medication, the doctor notifies the office in Texas and changes the medication for the patient, and then everything is sent either to the patient's house or to the doctor's office or to the local pharmacy, where the patient can then pick up the medication and take it home. It's a good program, but they do over forty-two thousand dollars, I mean, forty-two thousand prescriptions a, a month in servicing that throughout the country. So if you're anybody throughout the country who's maybe in need, let us know, because it's a nationwide program. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Tony, this program, actually, what pharmaceutical companies do is use it as write-offs?
Yes, the pharmaceutical companies realize that some people in this country are on a fixed income and still need medication but can't afford to pay for it. So as a company, they provide this service, and it's goodwill for the pharmaceutical company. Also, it's a tax write-off for the company because they can say they gave away so many thousand dollars of drugs throughout the year. So it's a, a program where an individual can also do it themselves if they want, but I've been told that the applications from the companies are very detailed, and if you make a mistake, you got, they send it back to the, to the person who fell out. Well, this company has ironed out the plans of over a hundred companies, and it's a one, or it's a two-page application with the name, phone number in the front, and in the back of the application, you have your medication, and it's streamlined so that the person can understand it and send it to the company and get their drugs.
And when you consider seven dollars a month or nine dollars a month per prescription, that, that, when some of these prescriptions cost thirty dollars to a hundred and probably more, I think this is a fantastic program.
Yeah, we had one patient that came to our office and was paying over six hundred dollars a month medication, and with this program, they were only paying, I think, fifty-six dollars a month.
That's great. And it beats going to Canada.
Pardon?
It beats going to Canada.
Oh, yes, yeah. You stay, you stay at home and just fill out the paperwork and mail it in.
Right.
Lot better.
Uh, and Tony, you did say that you would help one of our assistants, if my colleagues agree, to fill, help the public fill out forms?
Sure, sure.
And they can either do that then through this office or through your office?
That's correct.
So that we have different locations in the county where people can come?
Right. If there are people that are coming to Alaria, need help, we have a, a staff that can come out here and help fill out the forms.
That's great.
Or if they're, want to come to Avon Lake office, we can either go, sometimes you Or if they want to come to Avon Lake office, we can either go, sometimes you can go to their homes.
And I would hope that this, more communities would pick this up and put some of their staff on it to help people fill out the applications, so that wherever people live, they're close to help.
Yes.
But what I would like to do is ask my colleagues if they would mind if Tony was to come in and assist to train a couple of our people to fill out the forms and assist others to, in filling out their forms. And Tony said that he would do this free of charge, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yes. We provide a public service.
I have a problem with that. I appreciate your help, so.
If you would work with the administrator, I think that it would be a smoother transition.
And also, if we can get the telephone numbers on the screen when this is taped and televised into the homes of people, I'd appreciate it, but I will also give your telephone number and my assistant's telephone number where people can call. The area code for Tony is 440-933-3129, correct?
That's correct.
And my assistant Kathy would be 440-329-5101. Thank you, and I would like to thank my colleagues for their assistance.
Thank you. Any questions, feel free, call me.
Is there anyone here that might have questions for Tony? Thank you, Tony.
Do you have more?
No, that's all I have.
Do you want to do the 10:15 appointment?
Yeah, I think we should.
Lorraine County Historical Society, to update the board of commissioners?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good day, all.
I'm Bill Byrd, Executive Director of Lorraine County Historical Society. Very pleased to be here today to tell you what we've been doing over the last year and a half, I guess, with money that was appropriated to us. Certainly has been an interesting journey. At the time that the appropriation was given, we basically promised to do three major things with that, and I think we've certainly done that, and I'd like to personally bring that to your attention this morning. The thing that's most immediately on my mind is our Ohio 200 exhibit at French Creek Nature Center. I've been working very diligently on this, as has the Metro Parks and a lot of other people. We are opening that exhibit to the public tomorrow, and it will be open for the next eight weeks and nine weekends, so a lot of opportunity for people to see a slice of Lorraine County history. I don't know exactly what the rules are, but I have a flyer on this. I'd certainly appreciate the chance to distribute it in the audience if that's okay and around the table. I hope that a lot of you have heard of this, but at the same time, this specifically gives you the dates and times. In this particular activity, we are combining the efforts of 17 different groups, and we are hitting communities throughout the county. We have, I shouldn't start naming them because I'll forget somebody, but you know, Lorraine's involved, Avon Lake's involved, Avon, Alaria, North Ridgeville, Carlisle Township, Brownhelm, Belden, North Ridgeville, if I didn't already say them, Columbia, Huntington, Rochester, you know, the entire county was invited to participate, and it's very exciting to be able to put all of these groups together. Matt from the Metro Parks referred to the exhibit as a Cliff's Notes of Lorraine County history. We're certainly not able to include every single thing in the exhibit, but we took artifacts that were available to us, and we've organized them in a very unique and interesting way, and we're very excited about this. It's a really neat endeavor, certainly a very bold undertaking, and I think Lorraine County should be very proud that we've done this in conjunction with the Ohio Bicentennial. And Board of Commissioners should be very proud that you chose to help us out financially in this endeavor, and we're certainly very appreciative of that support, and I made a lot of efforts to let the public know that, and we'll continue to do that. We also produced a video in conjunction with this exhibit, and this video is specific to the history of the townships. This is something we felt had not been done before. We partnered with the Lorraine County Community College, so there's yet another entity in the partnership, and I feel the video is very professional. It will be viewed at the exhibit, and it's also available for the different groups to have a copy for their library, and it's available for public sale as well. There is a lot of special programming in conjunction with this exhibit, and that's where a particular community has a little bit of space to dress up their community for a few days of the exhibit extra and present some programs specific to Oberlin, Lorraine, Alaria, Avon Lake, et cetera. And again, on the bottom of the flyer, the dates that different communities are participating is indicated, so that's just another special feature of what we've done out there. Any question that you might have about the exhibit before I move on, I just, I'm extremely excited about this. It's a really neat thing. We've spent over two years in the planning, and I'm very hopeful you'll be equally excited when you see it.
Did you leave some of those flyers in our brochure rack downstairs?
No, I didn't, but I certainly can.
You're welcome to do that.
Absolutely. Let me move on. Another very exciting piece of what we have done is we have formed the Lorraine County Preservation Network, and this endeavor is being done in partnership with the Cleveland Restoration Society, and they have an outreach arm referred to as the Preservation Resource Center of Northeastern Ohio, and their job is to try to extend the services of Cleveland Restoration Society into the seven counties that are contiguous to Cuyahoga. In Lorraine County, the Preservation Network that we formed is essentially the partner or arm of Cleveland Restoration Society in this county. I have some people in the audience that are representative of our network today, and I'd like to just quickly recognize the preservation consultant that we hired, and we're very fortunate to have a woman of her experience to work with us, is Marilyn Fedelcheck Harley.
Good morning, Marilyn.
And sitting behind her is the Preservation Resource Center representative from Cleveland Restoration Society, which is Chuck Owen.
Welcome.
Good morning.
We had also invited any other members of our network to attend here today, and I see a couple in the audience. I know Phil represents Main Street Alaria, and Jeff Sigsworth's back here representing the Ridgeville Historical Society. I don't see anybody else, but at any rate, what we did, Marilyn conducted 21 interviews with different groups that we thought had an interest in preservation in the county, and our hope was to organize these groups into some type of loose coalition or network and try to increase everybody's capability to be educated and in turn to educate the public. What came out of the interviews was that there was an interest in proceeding, there was not a particular interest in having more meetings. So we have basically 20 different groups, plus some private individuals, have been represented at the meetings we've had. They generally are not certainly all there at the same time, but the feeling was that there was a need for an educational component, and we're attempting to do that. One thing that we did recently was that we had a half-day workshop here in Alaria on March 29th, where we offered information about stewardship of historic properties or, you know, in general, preservation of older buildings, et cetera, et cetera. And there is also a full-day workshop, which is a very important workshop on May 31st, and this is going to be at the Oberlin College, and this is actually a regional workshop. National Trust is a sponsor of this, as is Cleveland Restoration Society, as is our own Preservation Network, and we're encouraging all of you as commissioners to consider attending this. There's going to be presentations there about low-interest loan programs that have taken place in Cuyahoga County, and we feel that this is a very important workshop, so we certainly hope that a lot of people will attend this on May 31st at Oberlin College. In addition to that, Marilyn is offering direct tech support to groups or individuals who request it, and she prepared something as simple as frequently asked questions so that a staff, like my staff at the Historical Society, when people call and say, you know, what can I do about this situation with my older house, they have more ability to direct that person properly. We're also working on a program for upgrading the literature that's available in local libraries. We would like the best collection of information available to the public in their libraries, so we're working on that. That is pretty much a good thumbnail sketch of what the network's been doing so far. Do we have any specific questions to that?
Sounds like you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Okay, the third component of what we did was a local grants program, which also then included a grant to ourselves, but what we were attempting to do was to assist historical societies in the county with projects. We ended up assisting seven local historical societies, plus the Lorraine County Historical Society. Some of the projects that I'm most excited about include, in Oberlin, the Monroe House that's owned by the group called Ohio, Ohio Historic and Improvement Organization, they were able to build a set of storm windows for this house. Now, you need to understand that these are really unique windows, they're rounded at the top with an arch, so it's not just a basic rectangle window, and of course, the desire to be historically accurate, to build these out of wood, but to include some glass that would be UV, you know, blocked, you know, for the good of the insides of the building, and they had 26 windows in the house, and we were able to supply most of the cost of that project for them through our grants program. At Black River Historical Society in Lorraine, we provided computer equipment that allowed them to buy a network server and printer that could link together the different computers that they already had and some software that upgraded that. At the Amherst Historical Society, they have a really neat project. We were certainly not able to fund the entire project, but they have a building that in itself is very interesting. It was actually used as a POW barracks in World War II, and they have this building now at the Sandstone Village Center, and they're attempting to turn this into an old-time machine shop where they would demonstrate steam and belt-driven machinery. And we funded two phases of their project, basically the phase that allowed them to do some stabilizing work on the building, and a phase that allowed them to upgrade their electrical service to the building. The Columbia Historical Society has the Bronson House. The Bronson family was the first permanent family in Lorraine County, starting in 1807, and we were able to provide a series of eight heaters for that building, which previously had no heat, and exhaust fans for the summer, so they gained some heating and cooling capability for the Bronson House. At the Lorraine County Historical Society, we have an old voting booth. In the days that the machines were not in the schools and churches or wherever they are now, there were voting booths on vacant lots that contained the machines. I still remember my parents voting in that when I was very, very young. Not too many of these have survived, and ours survived but was deteriorating, and we did a rebuild of this, re-roofed, and we used grant money, again, from the commissioners to do that project. So we've really attempted to spend the money in a variety of ways, and that's what we promised to do initially, and I think we've done that. Ron Twining has worked carefully with us and certainly has helped me extensively. I don't know if Ron has anything to add to my report, or if you have any questions about the local grants program. Okay, well, I had submitted a proposal for continued funding. I hope that you received it in February. I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage here. One phone message I received said there had been some type of resolution in March. I was not aware of that. Was there any resolution in March?
I believe there was a resolution to fund, what, was it $25,000?
Yes.
With appropriation, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, the request was for 60?
Yes. Okay, I was not aware of that. So there was a resolution to fund part of what we asked for?
Yeah, just part, unfortunately.
But I have a question. The resolution was passed to appropriate it, but I think that we need to take a next step, do we not?
We simply need an invoice. If you'll invoice this to Mr. Roca, he'll take care of the mechanics in-house. And I apologize that you weren't notified. I thought you had been.
Okay, what portion of what I asked for was funded, or was it just?
It was a blanket appropriation for $25,000.
A blanket appropriation.
Should we send the invoice for $60,000 so we can revisit it, or are we done revisiting it?
I'm assuming you're questioning your colleagues, not myself.
I think with local government funding the way it is, and our concerns in regards to our general fund budget, that actually you should feel fortunate to give $25,000.
Well, absolutely. I'm not questioning that.
No, I was.
And I appreciate that as well.
On your behalf, Bill, on your behalf.
We're very appreciative of any dollars we can get. I guess my choice would be, and I've only had 10 seconds to think about this, you know, I think our Preservation Network's extremely valuable, and I think we need to fund that. I think the local grants program is extremely valuable, but to me, that would be the part of the appropriation that you did not fund, you know, if it's left up to my choice, so...
I think what I heard is it is. It's up to you on how to...
But I think that that was a very wise choice that you made.
Okay.
Well, it's only 10 seconds, but...
If there's any interest in funding the local grants program, why, I was certainly welcome revisiting that, and I guess at this point, thank you very much for the appropriation, and I would like to pass out our flyers.
Thank you.
I want to see you at the Ohio 200 exhibit, not just all of you, but folks in the audience. I think it's a great exhibit.
And while you're doing that, I would just like to commend you and all those that you have worked with to preserve history in Lorraine County and to bring it forward, and I just think it's a wonderful partnership, and I'm pleased to be a part of it.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you coming in, because a lot of times we don't get to hear how the grant monies that we vote and pass are actually spent, and I appreciate the way that you guys have actually spread this thing out throughout the whole county, and I think you did an excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, Madam Chair, I guess we go back to old business. Is there any old business other than note?
I don't have any.
Maybe not just old business, but kind of to piggyback on what Bill has told us this morning. I think we all received a thank you note from the Visitors Bureau for the brochure that we funded, which talks about Lorraine County Bicentennial, and in fact, many of the things that Bill reported on this morning, thank you, Ron, are contained in this brochure, so I'm sure that these are available round and about. Just one, Commissioner Basie requests the special prosecutor to be appointed to review the shorting of Lorraine County prosecutors' documents.
Yes, I'd like some discussion. I'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
Well, Madam Chair, I don't know if you had a chance to read the letter that was just delivered to us from the assistant prosecutor, or excuse me, from the prosecutor. May I read it?
Well, I-
Well, I did read it, and the bottom line is that the prosecutor feels that he's satisfied, that the documents have been fully reviewed to his satisfaction, that records and documents that were shredded were done in ordinary course of business and in accordance with the law and record retention rules and regulations. I have a problem with this...
We got this by the way we were sitting up here. So if the media would like to get a copy of this letter that was hand delivered to us, I can see you might want a copy of it. I think it'd be more appropriate to read the whole letter, but that's just me.
I mean, that was the bottom line. That's just of it, and it's going to be time consuming because I would also like the clerk to read the statement that I gave last week.
With all due respect, Madam Chair, if we're not going to read the prosecutor's letter, I don't want to hear your statement again.
Okay, then. If you don't want to hear the statement again, what is your problem?
I don't have a problem.
Well, it sounded kind of...
Well, no, I think the prosecutor took the time to deliver to us a letter, and I think it's important that we know what he has to say on the issue.
Okay, Madam Commissioner...
You are the chair, you have it however you want.
Excuse me. I have a problem with that because the issue reflects negativity on the prosecutor's office, and it is against the disciplinary rules and the ethics. And Mr. Innis excused himself last week just for that same purpose, that he could not participate in that discussion. And it's possible, to me, there's a possibility of other prosecutors in the office to advise or represent this board on this issue. That is definitely a conflict. I have a problem with that opinion, and I think that this board needs its own legal counsel in regards to this issue, unbiased legal counsel that we can refer to. Now, I'm not putting Mr. Innis or Mr. Manning or anyone else in that office in a situation where they have a possible ethics problem. And then there is a Supreme Court ruling. The Supreme Court has ruled whether civil or criminal, the individual or county could be liable even if a single document that could have a bearing on a case, the county could have a liability if it is important to the case. Now, I think the air should be cleared once and for all.
I just did a quick investigation, couple of phone calls. I heard there was over 26 bags of shredded documents and less than 10 was from the prosecutor's office. So if there's an issue, it's more than just the prosecutor's office, and I don't want to be the one taking the charge on this. So I thought the issue was done a month ago. It come up again. We have another letter today. I think the issue's, you know, pretty much off the table. But if you want to pursue it, I don't understand, what do you want to pursue, a new legal counsel other than the prosecutor's office?
Yes, and we do need...
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
I know that we're not, but we can address the court. We can write a letter to the court, the judges, please.
I don't want to participate in writing a letter. If you want to, I don't see why you cannot on your own.
Because it has to be by the board. This is a body.
Okay, then I'm not going to support that, so...
Madam Chair, I thought, it's my understanding that the prosecutor handles issues such as this in Lorraine County and that when there is a perceived ill or whatever you want to call it, it's referred to the prosecutor's office. That's why I was pleased to receive the prosecutor's letter this morning, and I wanted to review what it said because I think it substantiated my opinion that this is an issue for the prosecutor to handle. And if the prosecutor is in fact satisfied with what transpired, I don't believe it is our job, and this is my personal opinion, I don't believe it is our job to insert our will for the prosecutor's will on this particular issue.
But we have a job to protect the public's interest and the funding. And that's our job. If we have a liability here, I want the air cleared.
Well, I think the air has already been cleared by view of what has transpired in the prosecutor's office.
Until, Commissioner Blair, I want you to understand this too. If there, if someone, if there was a record that was destroyed, whether accidentally or whatever, it is at the time of discovery that a person can come back to the county and has four years after the time of discovery. So whether it's now or 10 years from now, if there has been any evidence that has been destroyed or missing or whatever, accidentally or whatever, that is when the individual can come back and sue the county, and it could be millions. Now, I feel as an elected official, the steward of taxpayers' dollars, I want this issue settled once and for all, and if it can't be, then I wash my hands of the issue and I want that on the record.
Commissioner, may I make a comment?
If you feel...
We're having a little trouble understanding what the issue is. In your statement last week, you said there ought to be a review body. There is a review body. It's the Records Commission. That's under the supervision of the county commissioners. We submitted a request to dispose of those documents, the same as every other office in this county does, the Recorder's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Auditor's Office, the Clerk of Courts Office, the Commissioner's Office, Your Honor. As Mr. Moore has indicated, there were many other documents destroyed beside ours. It's curious that you choose to isolate the prosecutor's office.
I don't think I did, Jerry, excuse me, but if you would read the statement, that does not just isolate the prosecutor's office, but the light is shed on the prosecutor's office at this time.
By whom, Commissioner?
And it also stated in the paper that it went to the Review Committee in July or whenever it was, and these records were not shredded until last month. And I don't know if you should be discussing this issue with us.
Well, Commissioner, I'm not going to sit here and allow you to make McCarthy-type allegations toward our office and not respond to that. I'm going to respond on behalf of the staff of our office who you are criticizing. You know, Mrs. Vacey, I saw you throw a piece of paper away last week. Should we investigate whether that was public record?
Well, that's the whole thing...
How many commissions do you want to appoint to go after this? We did everything appropriate according to law. Chronicle Telegram was over there. We immediately produced for them our authorization to do that. We immediately showed to them everything we did, Commissioner. We have to shred documents because our FOJ records contain references to undercover agents, confidential informants, victims and witnesses who according to law are allowed to be protected and have to be protected, Mrs. Vacey. We can't put those documents in a bag and set them on the street. I'm sure the sheriff would be pleased if all our witnesses would just be accessed to that kind of information. It's a safety, it's a life threatening issue, Commissioner Vacey. We protect those people, and we resent you making allegations that are just simply unfounded with any fact. When there's a criminal investigation, Mrs. Vacey, and somebody comes up with a fact, we'll investigate it. If you have information or a fact that you can support with documentation, then why don't you present it right now instead of just making allegations?
Well, here, Mr. Innis, you said this, and it's in the paper, okay? No special request involving shredding of the white materials was made to the committee comprised of county officials that oversees the disposable public records. And now you just changed your tune.
I did not, Mrs. Vacey.
Every article that I have read is a different story. And to correct you, my statement did not just say the prosecutor's, it did not just stop there. I also ask that we all, all elected officials, all departments, be informed of how to keep records and how to destroy them.
And we are, through your Records Commission, Mrs. Vacey. Again, I say, do you have any fact to base anything? Mr. White, Mr. White is a veteran. He has been a participant in all kinds of community activities in 22 years of being a prosecutor. Those are his personal documents. Ma'am, the Constitution of the United States protects his documents, and he's able to do with his personal papers what he may wish, the same as you are, the same as any other citizen.
Then why were those personal papers in a public office?
He kept them on the shelf. You don't have personal papers in your office, Mrs. Vacey?
No, I have photographs.
I know you have personal papers in your office.
How do you know that unless you've been...
You've shown them to me, Mrs. Vacey.
Personal papers?
Yes.
I don't recall ever showing you. It's a question of what has been in the paper, and every statement, every paper is reporting...
Everything is in the paper, you want to investigate. So every time the paper says something about you, you want it investigated, Mrs. Vacey? Is that what you're saying?
Jerry, I don't expect you to be for this. I really don't. And I'm not directing it to anyone personal.
Well, I submit, Mrs. Vacey. Our office is not going to be subjected to what I just referred to, McCarthy-type allegations, just coming in here and making allegations that you don't have anything to support it.
I don't think I've made the allegations, and newspapers have started this.
And we satisfied them. The newspaper's request was handled that evening within 10 minutes.
I'm not going to argue the issue because I can see where it's going, but I'd just like the record to indicate that I have washed my hands of the issue if anything in the future comes up with this.
Anything for the commissioners?
I have nothing else.
The Board of Commissioners will meet on Thursday, May 1st, 2003, at 7:00 PM. Sheffield Township Hall, 5166 Clinton Avenue, Lorraine. Therefore, there will be no meeting that morning. Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacey?
Aye.
And public comment?
Is there anyone in the audience that would, has any questions or comments?
Elizabeth Rummix, R.M.I.C.S., Oberlin. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the commissioners who have apparently taken a speed reading course because I see that a number of relatively recent minutes have been approved. So thank you for that. At one time, there was considerable lag in the acceptance, reading and acceptance of minutes. Secondly, I would also like to say it is very nice to see a new edition of this directory for the county. I use it considerably. I take copies to the public library and the Oberlin College Library reference desks, and it is an extremely handy, detailed listing of the offices, the phone numbers, and the individuals for boards and commissioners. It's also a very handsome new format, and so I just simply wanted to thank the commissioners
Mike Sherman, on behalf of the Lorraine County AFL-CIO, an announcement, Workers Memorial Day, Monday, April 28th. Services will be held at 12 noon at the Aluria Monument, which is located on the north side of the county courthouse, and at 5:00 PM in Lorraine at the monument, which is located in front of Lorraine City Hall. On April 28th, the unions of the AFL-CIO observe Workers Memorial Day to remember those who have suffered and died on the job. As we remember workers who have died in the workplace catastrophes, suffered diseases due to exposure to toxic substances, or who have been injured because of dangerous conditions, we rededicate ourselves to fight for a safe workplace. Each year, nearly 6,000 workers are killed at work, 50,000 die from occupational diseases, and millions more are injured. Many long-recognized hazards have not been addressed, and new workplace hazards emerge. Ergonomic hazards cripple and injure more than 1.8 million workers each year and remain the nation's biggest safety and health problem. Immigrant workers are being killed on the job in record numbers. Millions of workers have no Occupational Safety and Health Administration OSHA protection. On April the 28th, we will honor the fallen workers, and we will keep on fighting until we have the promise of safe jobs for everybody. I want to thank the commissioners for their previous support on this day. I laid materials on each of your desks this morning, sample proclamations that you've done in the past. I would hope you'd see fit to do that again. I want to thank Mr. Cordez's office for his assistance in the maintaining of the monument and his staff. Thanks Sheriff Sumitti. His honor guard is going to participate this year, and we're going to highlight and have the military participate as well because what better example of individuals who are killed and injured on the worksite than the current job that our military is doing at home and abroad? Details will be finalized at this evening's AFL-CIO meeting, and we'll forward press releases to the media people and all the additional county staff. So again, thank you for your participation in the past and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for the heads up.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
I just have a comment on last week. Commissioner Vacey asked for consideration of the formation of a public defenders office here in Lorraine County. And I want to just comment that I know I've read in the newspapers that the judges are satisfied with the way that this justice system is operating, and prosecutor's office is happy with the court-appointed attorneys. They should sit in the hallways, they should go to juvenile detention home and sit in the visitation room and listen to the parents talk about the court-appointed attorneys that they have, court-appointed attorneys that have been given them, who have never contacted them even two weeks after they've been appointed, court-appointed attorneys. They are getting pro bono type monies for their work, and we sorely need this. This county is growing. Cuyahoga County has a public defenders office that works very well. Why? Lorraine County is against a public defenders office, is beyond me. I've lived in Cuyahoga County my whole life, the last six years in Lorraine County, been very active with the court system, been a guardian ad litem here for six years, and been very active in Cuyahoga County with juvenile probation, Cleveland Ray Crisis Center. So I have seen people then given court-appointed attorneys here in Lorraine County versus public defenders, and I would hope that they seriously consider this issue because the juveniles and the many parents who really do not understand when a court-appointed attorney is given them exactly what should happen, I think that should be explained to them. It is not happening here in Lorraine County. So I really hope that you do consider this very seriously because justice here is extremely important to me and I think to most people that live in this county. Thank you.
Would you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm Sarah. My name is Judy Quigley. I live in Eaton Township.
Thank you, Mrs. Quigley. Is there anyone else? I thank you very much for your attendance this morning, and I would move to go into executive session.
Just for, yes, I'll second.
Mrs. Vacey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Unscightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up.
Keep Lorraine County beautiful.
Welcome you to this topping out ceremony, which signifies that the highest point of construction has been reached and completed. This event includes an historically based ritual during which an evergreen tree and the American, state, and county flags are raised to the highest point of this structure. This effort is a gesture of wishing prosperity to the building and safety to those who use it, as well as to recognize the diligence of the construction workers for their care and concern while building it, especially during this severely cold past winter season. The sunshine and warmth today is indicative of... The sunshine and warmth today is indicative of the spring season which we will officially welcome tomorrow. Topping-out ceremonies are an important custom in the steel construction industry. However, there are various stories about its origin. One is that the Germans in the Black Forest seem to have invented the Christmas tree custom to celebrate the nativity of Jesus Christ, and hardly a structure goes up in Germany without an evergreen to signal the birth of a new building. The Swiss also lay claim to the custom of a fir tree to signal the topping-out. The American flag was added in about 1919 to demonstrate the ironworkers' loyalty to flag and country. Others believe the flag was first used when steel framing became popular. It was in dedication to good old US-made... Take my page, boy. Take this, page. Page two. Good old US-made steel beams. The signing of the last beam or girder by laborers has similar traditional roots. So, we are gathered here today to add our own personal touch to this topping-out ritual and to give thanks to the dedicated employees who have worked so hard and through such a winter to continue to keep this project on schedule. I have an email from my former administrative assistant, Gloria Kretler, from North Fort Myers. She regularly checks the Justice Center's progress on the webcam. Her March 15th memo says, quote, "The Justice Center building is looking good. It must have been rough on the construction crews with all the bad weather you had had." So, your progress and devotion is known in Florida as well. Last fall, we predicted that the topping-out ceremony would occur on my birthday, which is this Saturday. So, thanks again for all your hard work and for being on time. The citizens of Lorraine County appreciate all the fine work that has gone into this project to date. We look forward to its dedication, and we invite you all to move down to the beam now and to sign your names.
What this is, is generally on these type of jobs, we like to put a panel together that simulates all the aspects of the building. The building's going to be comprised of two different colors of brick with various different reveals in that brick. Also, you're going to have sandstone cast into the brick in certain panels. Outside of that, this is going to be the curtain wall system. I don't know how many of y'all have seen the rendering of the building. We have a large curtain wall that goes up the front of the building. It's going to be comprised of this type of material in this color, and then we throw in the different types of glass that'll also be in that panel. On the other side, you'll see there's a louver in place. That's just going to be the typical type of louver that'll be in an exhaust area of the building. We just tried to depict all the aspects of the building in this small little mock-up panel, just so everyone can have an idea of what it looks like. What we'll do is we'll just take a tour of the prison, and we'll go into the secure areas that we've recently completed. Of course, this is the secure sally port where the sheriffs can bring criminals down and unload them. The doors go down, everything is secure. From this point as we go through, everything is secure.
We're going to use combo locks on all the doors. So, only then we'll be able to get down here. But this is not, because none of this is going to be open to the public.
Right. What's in here, right?
This is one of the hearts of the building. This is the main chiller room. The bourbon piping, process piping, it's been hard at work down here, as you can see, giving the main heart of the building. All the fire control. You've got two different chillers, pumps, auxiliary pumps, everything to keep the building cool and warm as necessary. As the piping or the pumps vibrate, there's enough of a jolt in there that eventually it'll wear out. These are Victalic fittings. They have a rubber O-ring in here. It'll wear those out unless you have some flexible connector to let things move separately. This room houses the air handler that controls all the airflow in this level of the building. Also, this room contains the fire suppression system booster pumps, domestic water booster pumps. All the main water flow in the building comes from this room. And as you can see, that's all the pipes that go over to those chillers, conveys through here, continues out down that corridor, and eventually it'll go up seven floors to the top. Those hanger beams, they'll get fireproofed afterwards. No asbestos. Generally, they come in and they fireproof all the structure, and once these men come in and start hanging pipes, they have to kind of improvise and put their own steel up. As that's not a structural member of the building so much, it's not as important that it's all them at the same time. On the other side of this wall, we've got this typical, I believe it's the sheriffs and the personnel, their locker rooms and things are down there. Round the corner, that's just a general purpose corridor. If somebody comes here, they're going to go through those secure areas into the secure elevators, right up to the court floor that they're going to be on, there'll be another secure holding facility there. Unlike the way things are right now, prisoners aren't going to be out in the open. When this facility's in operation, once they come in, they're well-isolated from everyone else. We're scheduled right now, and we're right on track, I believe, to be turning the building over late spring of 2004, and we hope that the building will be in operation in the summer of 2004. It's going to take quite a bit of time for the county to move in, get all their equipment in place, the furniture in place, so we're looking at, you know, in the summer of 2004.
Every year in Lorraine County, hundreds of children are abused and neglected. Many are removed from their homes for their protection. Judges must decide their futures, but they need information to make these critical decisions. You can provide this information through Voices for Children. Volunteers are men and women from all walks of life with no special or legal background who work alongside attorneys, social workers, and other court employees. As an officer of the court, you find out as much as you can about the child. You will review records, interview parents and relatives, foster parents, talk to teachers, neighbors, and, most importantly, the child. When the volunteer has a complete profile, he or she appears in court to recommend what is best for the child's future. You've heard the statistics on child abuse. Now is your chance to do something about it. You don't need any special qualifications, only the desire to protect local children who desperately need your help. To become a special advocate or for more information on our next training session, call Voices for Children today.
Grass clippings, food scraps, garden remains, leaves, all have one thing in common. They can all be composted. All these things will go back to nature, using only air and water. Nature will recycle these and numerous other items back into rich soil to benefit your garden or shrubs. Turn it on the ground or tumble it in special drums. Composting saves landfill space and can save you money. Composting can turn into a fun project for the entire family.
I am very excited about this new space that we have here, courtesy of the Board of Commissioners for Lorraine County. We are now located in our new office. Today has been our open house ribbon cutting.
Welcome, everybody. The sun is shining on Lorraine County today. Five years ago, our priorities on economic development were in the basement. Hey, but this year...
Oh, one last.
But this year, we have invested 10 times of that of 1997. This building represents the Lorraine County Commissioners' commitment to improving the quality of life for all its citizens, and now our economic priorities are the envy of northeast Ohio. Commissioner Vacy?
I just want to thank you for the honor of your presence here today, and, you know, when I just took office, we had a two-man department in economic development. Today, we're up to 12 and a standalone building, and I think it's just wonderful. And I want you to know, too, the carpeting that you're going to walk on in there was provided by Solid Waste. It's, what, 40% recycled material? And when you walk on that, you'll know that someone recycled in Lorraine County. Hopefully, we'll get more people to do that. But thank you again for being here, and it's a pleasure to have you. Thank you for coming this morning. About 10 years ago, as Commissioner Vacy said, although it was never a two-person economic development department, when I got here, it was a one-person show, and we had a planning commission. And the idea was conceived that we ought to join those two departments together and form the Lorraine County Community Development Department, which we did. And then we got Ron Twining, our community development director, who's done a wonderful job, together with Jim Cortez, our county administrator, and this wonderful staff that you see here. And we're doing great things for Lorraine County. Thank you so much for coming this morning.
I'd like to thank everybody for showing up today, especially we have some elected officials here from Amherst. Our auditor, Diane Esswein, thank you for attending. Our state senator, Jeffrey Armbruster, thank you for attending. Alaria City Councilman, Paul Levens, thank you for attending. And our Lorraine County Sheriff, Sheriff Sumitti, thank you again for attending. And most of all, I'll thank you all for attending here. Also, I'd like to thank the people that worked on this project. What's interesting here is this building, you know, we purchased it. Within a year, we had the architects, was Joseph Ferret and Chase Keichel from Joseph Ferret and Associates, the architects. Steve Fox of S&amp;M Fox Construction, Restroom renovation, and ADA door opener. The Puffrey Roofie, Tom Murray and Amy Monack of Bobble's Office Plus and Office Space Design. Pat McCarthy, Dupont Flooring Systems Carpet Installation. The Refrigeration Specialist, Inc. for the HVAC, and the Locks Garden Center for the plant. And the beauty of this is all this work, except for the recycled carpeting, but the labor was here, was all done with Lorraine County people with Lorraine County money. So, that's fantastic, that that's what this board's all about. And also, who participated in putting this thing together, I'd like to thank Jim Cortez, our county administrator. I'd also like to thank Yvonne Newton, Pam Stevens, and Karen Davis. Also, our maintenance crew. These guys don't get recognized enough. Ralph Smigala, Dave Karpinski, and their whole... Ralph Smigala, Dave Karpinski, and their whole crew of Herb, Rick, Gordon, Joe, Zed, and Don, Chad, James, Mike, Brian, Michael, and Thomas. They did a lot of work here to get the job done right. Also, these are other county people that helped us with Dan Bilman, and Marilyn Puliski, Ernie Smith, Karen Cleveland, Nancy Bryant, Tim Cosco, Joey Updike, Boyd Weber, me, Howard Reynolds, and Jennifer Dimick. They did a lot of work to make this thing happen today. Oh, and Marcia Dumpfunk from Brownsville Township Clerk is here too. So, thank you. I think it's time to cut the ribbon. Do we have our scissors?
Ready?
Are we all ready, guys? One, two, three. There we go.
Oh, my God.
We have lots of refreshments, videos, the people we'll be talking to. Please come in and walk around and see what we have here.
This location is at 216 Third Street. We moved from the county administration building, which is virtually across the street. So, we're still close to them and the records that we need access to, and closed for citizens to park in a county parking garage and walk across the street to get any help and assistance here. We house, in addition to the lamp program, the Port Authority is located here, operating out of our office. We also have the revolving loan fund, tax abatement issues. All of these matters come to this building, and we welcome visitors at any point to come in. Our office hours, Monday through Friday, 8 o'clock in the morning, and we typically close at 4:30. A lot of citizen meetings are held. We have two outstanding conference rooms. One large one that will accommodate about 45 people, and then a smaller one that is a little friendlier, down to about six or eight people that could be accommodated in there. We're real excited about the opportunity the Board of Commissioners have provided us through the gracious funding of the residents of Lorraine County. We look for great things to come in this new space.